Thank you for joining us for our March 4th, 7:00 PM meeting. Would everyone please join us in...
Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, one liberty and justice for all.
We've got a few announcements tonight. We have from Senator Moore, he sent a letter, some good news that he learned and wanted us to share with the rest of the town. We have a BMR student, Timothy McLaughlin Jr., graduate of BMR, has been offered admission to West Point. Tim lives at 163 Hill Street in Millville. Tim has a younger brother, Sean, at the Hartnett School, and a younger sister, Bethany, at the Millville Elementary. In addition, an older sister who is also a BMR graduate. Tim was captain of both BMR baseball and soccer teams in his senior year. He was also a boys' state delegate in his junior year. Tim was nominated for West Point by Congressman Richard Neal and Senator John F. Kerry. He has been attending Stonehill College, but will now enter West Point this summer. West Point doesn't accept transfers, so he will be at the academy for a full four years, graduating with the class of 2017. His appointment to West Point is not only a great honor and achievement for Tim, but a credit to the Blackstone Millville School District, to Tim's teachers and coaches and the town of Millville. So congratulations to Timmy and his whole family. That is quite an achievement, and I have visited West Point quite a few times myself. And it is quite an establishment and a real honor to go there, and so congratulations.
Would it be the board's wishes to send a congratulatory letter?
Yeah, I think that would be a great idea. Anyone else?
Yep.
Reminder, the special town meeting scheduled for next Monday, March 11th, at 6:30 PM at the Millville Elementary School to address one warrant articles submitted by the Blackstone Millville School District regarding incurring debt to replace the roof at the high school. Please make every effort to attend this meeting, and we need a form of at least forty in order to act on this matter. So, you know, everybody here just kind of remembering, everybody listening, you know, tell your neighbors and everybody to, that'll be Monday, March 11th, at 6:30 at the elementary school. So very important meeting. We do have copies of that warrant here at the town hall if anybody would like to come down beforehand to acquire that. And again, we're here from 9:00 to 1:00 Monday through Thursday, and 6:00 to 8:00 Wednesday nights.
Is it also on the town website? No, not yet. Could we put it up on the town website for anyone who can't get down during those times?
The Finance Committee will hold its public hearing on this matter this Wednesday evening, March 6th, at 6:30 here at the town hall. If you have any questions regarding this matter, please attend this meeting. There will be representatives from the school district available to answer any questions. Next, we have budget meetings. The next joint budget meeting between the Board of Selectmen and Finance will be held March, Wednesday, March 13th, at 6:30 PM here at the town hall. These meetings are open to all town departments and members of the public. Anyone with questions regarding the status of the budget process are encouraged to attend these joint meetings. And one last thing, a reminder, the Board of Selectmen anticipates closing the warrants for the May 13th special and annual town meetings at the next regular VOS meeting on Monday, March 18th. Please be sure to submit your proposed warrant articles to the Executive Secretary before that date. And that's it for announcements. Next, we have the Blackstone Millville Regional School District, MSBA submission for the MES roof.
Mr. Chair, if I could explain this.
Okay.
MSBA, in order to submit for the Millville Roof Project, a vote needs to be taken from both the Board of Selectmen as well as the Regional School Committee. The Regional School Committee took their vote on our last meeting last week, and now it will come to you to take your vote to allow me to submit for the roofing project for Millville Elementary. Now, as you can see, you have quite a motion that needs to be made, and MSBA is very particular about this motion, and it needs to be entered into the minutes exactly as it's written.
Okay.
The only pieces in here that we have adjustment are the pieces that are italicized, and everything else is a very boilerplate wordage. If you go down to where it says, "Replace, renovate, or modernize," et cetera, et cetera, "school facilities, roof, windows, boilers," that's one area that I need to check. Now, that doesn't mean that this is what we're asking for, this is just that sentence. And then if you'll drop down, it says roof replacement. So that's what we're specifically looking at for this MSBA project. The window closes on April 10th, so I have, I've been working on the submission, and I will have it done hopefully in the next week. I will then get you a copy to see, and then I will submit. If we make it through the first round, they will send a person out to visually observe the roof, look at it, inspect it, and then it will go back to MSBA, and they will let us know at that point, will we move ahead or will we not. The thing that I would suggest, and I will certainly be doing this, and it would help if the Board of Selectmen would also follow, but a letter to our senators and representatives saying that we've made the submittal and any help that they could do in this process would be very grateful, would be very grateful for. So that's why I'm here tonight. If you have any questions, I'd be very happy to answer them, and if not, then I would be asking if you would be willing to read this motion, enter it into your minutes, and then I will take a copy of your minutes whenever they're ready, and then I have to submit this to MSBA.
Okay. Well, I don't have any questions. This is everything we had asked you, that beginning of winter to address.
Yes.
Basically, this is a window where you can put an application in to start?
Yes, yeah.
And this is the only window, so that's why you're doing this?
Yes.
Otherwise, we've got to wait another year.
Yeah, yeah. And I promise, I'll make it by the deadline.
Any other questions?
No, I do not.
Okay.
I just did two pages.
You weren't at the last meeting. I did a lot of reading, okay. "I make a motion, having convened an open meeting on March 4th, 2013, the Board of Selectmen in Millville, Massachusetts..." Is that right?
Board of Selectmen of Millville, Mass.
Anyway, it just sounded funny, okay. "...in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinance, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Board Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated March 10th, 2013, for the Millville Elementary School located at 122 Berthalet Way, Millville, Mass., which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Board Authority in the future: replacement, renovation, or modernizing of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in the facility; checked off at the Statement of Interest Form and a brief description of the deficiency described therein for each priority roof replacement; and hereby further specifically acknowledges that the submitting of this Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Board Authority, in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the city, town, regional school district to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Board, School Building Authority."
All second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And we will be back on...
You're welcome.
We'll be back on Wednesday to answer any questions that you may have about other projects. Thank you.
All right, next we have approval of minutes and warrants. We have the minutes for February 4th, 2013, and that was at 7:00 PM.
Now, let's just, John.
That was the last.
Oh, that's in the last packet, yep.
Motion approved, February 19th, 6:00 PM meeting.
We're on the 4th.
We're on the 4th.
February 4th. That was in last week's packet. We held it because we needed.
Mr. Coolen wasn't at the 4th.
Who are we looking for?
The other four.
So, John.
Mr. Laura, and Mr. Barrett, and yourself.
Make a motion to approve February 4th.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Now, on February 19th. Next, we have February 19th, 2013, and that was at 6:00 PM. So move. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
You're going to have to abstain.
Oh, that was the one I was on. Motion accepted, February 20th.
Wait, 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 wait. There just needs to be one correction, and February 20th, so can I make a motion, Charlie? I make a motion to approve February 20th meeting with the change in the second paragraph under the Highway Budget Department. It said, "Selectmen Coolen feels that the town proceeds, and if the town proceeds in this direction, the position should be an elected position," and I think Charlie had said, "appointed," yes?
Appointed.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So if we could just make that one change in that, then...
I think it should have been, shouldn't be, an elected position.
However, that.
Yeah, yeah.
So it reflects.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do a second. Second. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Good job. Next, we have warrants. Yep. Sorry. Motion to sign the warrants. Second. All in favor? Aye. Mrs. Lantle, would you like to... We can sign and listen at the same time.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like you to be easier on me than they go on Helen Clinton.
Are you going to get feisty?
Oh, okay. Okay, I believe I'm here because you would like to know what's happening in my department and give you an update. We've been very busy, and I've hired Diane Lockwood as my assistant. She was an election clerk, so it was a very easy transition. She's very techie, and we're really making great strides in that department. One of the things I'd like to do in the future regarding Diane and myself is, I'd like her to be able to become part of the Massachusetts Town Clerk Association. Currently, I'm a member, she's not, so I'd like to put in for her to be a member and a dues. I'd also like to be able to send her to some of the classes, especially the ones that have to do with technology. When we go to the conferences, some courses, you need to have a laptop in order to take part of them, and they're limited, and I'd rather send her. I'd also would like you to consider, like, in the future, procuring a laptop for my department, maybe through BVT or some way, but so that we can do that. I also, like I spoke to Helen this morning about the configuration of the town clerk's office. Currently, we're really cozy, and they're very tight. We've got to, like, move things out, maybe put some records in other places, in the back file, move a file cabinet, because we need to get another desk in there by April because we got word from the Secretary of State today that my application for new state computers are coming in, they're coming in in April. So that would mean we need not another, we only, we can, they only give us one printer, so we both have to have access to that, but we need to have room for a desk where we can put the new computer. So Diane could be working on some access programs or something, and I could get in. Usually, in other offices, when there's more than one person, they have two, and we've been operating with one by switching off and jumping onto something else. The other thing would be because of the smallness of the room. When someone comes in to register to vow, to get a dog license, marriage intentions, want a birth certificate, there, when we have three or four people in that room at the same time with what we have in there, it's really, it's not very tenable. So that's one of the things we're going to be working on soon, is reconfiguration, moving things out, you know, going through what we can put, what we need to have on hand that we can access quickly, and what we can move so that, but we've, we need to do that by April. I'd like to report that the codification for general code is coming along marvelously. We've been ahead of schedule, and that was one of the first things I wanted to do when I became town clerk, and I saw what other towns had for their bylaws. Ours was in such a poor state that this would be absolutely excellent, and they'll be, be able to be accessed through your smartphone or tablet or whatever, so it'll be very, very easy for that. The dog license program, which has not been changed in years and years and years, so the records were such that at this time of year, you know, everybody's getting their dog license, they're trying to, and it would be something that we'd get to when we can. There was no urgency or whatever. Now, because of using the special program that Diane put in, we're almost, we're almost, you know, at a level spot where they come in, we can do it. We're probably about thirty behind, you know, but we're getting there. And because of that, we're able to give more correct, immediate information to the animal control officer and whatever like that. So that'll be much more professional than it's been in the past, you know? And we're keeping records of all that with the rabies certificates and what's, but so that's coming along. It's a very, very, very good, we're very happy with that. What I'm not too happy with is the vital records part of the office. Right now, the way we access anything is, is have to get up and come into the safe room and take out some of the large books to look what we have. In the past, they used little index cards, they typed on it, you know, the person, the date for the marriage or birth, whatever. We haven't been using a typewriter in a couple of years, so obviously, all those records are at least two, three more years behind. And I would rather not just continue with that, I'd rather have that, those records entered into a program, that they could be accessed online, and then retain certain books, similar to the way Blackstone did it, because from the records that are in the computer, we take out sheets, put and save it in books that can be easily identified. That's one of the things I'd like to really work on, you know, in the next year or two. And with record preservation, it would be not only those vitals that we use, like, we have to access because people want birth certificates and marriage certificates, you know, readily, but also some of the older books that we might even just start on, what we might do to keep them in good condition. Some of them are really deteriorated, so that would be a cost, but it's like, I'd like to be looking into in the future what we could do little by little, working on, maybe a grant through record preservation or something, but I think it's something, in the long run, I want to start working on so that the records would be saved and kept adequately. Let's see, what else did I want to talk about? Oh, with the change, with the posting, with the open meeting law, Diane has been putting things on the computer for, if you go under Town Clerk Department and under Meetings and Agendas, people can access what's coming up. So we have the board out here, we have it online, and we also have the board out here. Now, out here, we've not been able to access it very well with snow, and it's, you can't even get to it, whatever. If at some point we do not need to do that anymore because we're going to be adequately covered the way we presently are doing it, I'm not sure of that, I'm going to check on that, I think maybe that board would be an excellent site to, like, let some committee, like the Centennial Committee, use it for pictures or, you know, a program or signs or whatever like that, so it would be, it should still be used, it's a nice thing. We've been able to keep the town hall office hours Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday mornings, 9:00 to 1:00 Wednesday night. I'm here very often on Thursday and other times later on in the week, but I don't post it, it's, I have to be open because a lot of the time when I'm here then, I'm doing correspondence and stuff for the state, you know, it's like, I'll help someone if they come in, but I'm there more to do this other kind of work, you know, that I need. Is there any other questions you'd like to ask me?
I don't have any.
I have a few. As far as Diane Lockwood being part of the Town Clerk Association, is there a dues? Do you know what that number is?
I think, well, of that, I'm not sure, Jen, because I think for the associate, it may not be the same as for a town clerk, and it depends on the size of the town, so maybe seventy-five dollars, maybe, maybe not that much, you know, it wouldn't be, it's not, but I would like to do that in the future so she can access.
And what does that give, what does that allow her to do?
Well, that would...
Because sometimes there's memberships where you just, you don't really, it doesn't...
Well, I would, I think it would allow her to participate in conferences, go to the classes, and eventually get credit for that, because I, you know, I've been racking up credits with the classes.
And those conferences and classes they offer, do they come with a fee?
No, no.
So those are offered, so you become an associate member, and then they tell you about the conferences that are being held?
Well, I know, she'd know about them because, you know, I get it, I hear about them, but we, there is the Massachusetts Town Clerks Association, and there is also a Worcester County Town Clerks Association. I currently belong to both of them. The state one runs the big conferences, the county one runs one day courses on certain things.
And Diane's available to attend those?
I don't know yet, but I would, I think so because they're during the day, I would think so.
You were talking about some of the technology and the dog licenses and so, I know we've talked in the past, and I don't know what our situation is for our IT, but is there a way that we could have people pay for their dog licenses online and then just come in and pick them up? I know, like, the high school, you can pay for my kid's lunch, I pay for preschool tuition, you can pay for whatever. I mean, the Blackstone Millville, I'm sure most schools are like that, so I'm wondering if we need to get with our IT person.
It's actually Unibank who does that, and I know, just with the real estate taxes and motor vehicle taxes that you can pay online if you're not overdue, it's actually a very time-consuming process for the treasurer to download that information from, it's actually a Unibank site, which is a link on our website.
Right.
So that would be something, if you wanted to adopt a new system and offer payment of other fees on there, that would have to go through the treasurer's office. Honestly, I don't know that she's going to be very open to it because I think it's going to add a lot of work to her workload, but I can check with her.
Well, I'm just not sure if there's, I mean, if there's a way, you know, not that system, but, I mean, there's all types of systems out there that we could...
Well, you'd have to be able to accept a credit card is what I'm assuming you mean, if they were going to pay online, so.
Pay dollars or something.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just wondering, I mean, because like, the high school's doing it, and, you know, they do it for lunch, they do it for tuition, they do it for, I mean, there's a list of things they have to take it for.
I think that's actually through Unibank as well, because I've used that myself, even BVT has it, so.
I just didn't know if that's something, you know, it just can be a list that's printed out, that it's paid, and they've processed, and then Masha can, you know, then her office can just submit it, and they know that they can come down within a week's time, and...
We could look into it, but I, at this point, we're not, we're so far behind that everything else, that it's, would be good, but to get to it, you know? We could revisit that maybe once we get a little bit more over the hump of what we're doing.
Everything you had spoke about today, you have currently budgeted, or are these things that you're going to look to increase your budget come annual town meeting?
I don't think, other than maybe a little bump with the professional, the line item for professional training, including Diane, that might go, needing, if we can get a laptop and get it through BVT, I mean, you know, anything, like, I'm willing to really accept what can be, if someone can help us with office.
Why does it have to be a laptop?
Because that, when we go to conferences, they, just like Jen's using her thing there...
Yeah, but you know what, if somebody's going to give you a computer and it's not a laptop, then it is what it is.
No, but it's so that you can go to a conference and then you can...
Like I said, Jennifer, if somebody's going to give us a computer and it's not a laptop...
But it won't serve, it won't be purposeful. I mean, you can take a computer and still put it somewhere, but they're saying for a laptop, when you go to a class sometimes, you know, the...
Yeah, I understand, but what I'm saying is, the town doesn't have the money to buy her a laptop.
Well, if she gets creative with her budget, or she finds somewhere that can...
If she becomes hard to get creative, we get a special election, again, so there goes another couple grand.
Yeah, that's, it's really, these elections are getting...
I mean, the Chrome notebooks now, I mean, they're two, three hundred, they're under five hundred dollars if you go the mini, but they're still a laptop. You're looking at the operating system on it, you're looking at just to get your Word and your Excel and your spreadsheets and...
You know, this five hundred here, five hundred there, I'll tell you what, why don't you buy her a laptop, a couple hundred dollars then?
I'm just saying, Jennifer.
Because far as I'm concerned, we don't have the money to buy laptops. We don't have money to buy anything.
But if that's what's needed to attend a conference to get knowledgeable for your department, then sometimes you have to make that investment in order to do it.
What does she physically need, a laptop?
Ain't got it, ain't got it.
When we go to conferences, and I would, I know there, there was one, this last conference, I couldn't get into it because everyone who attended, you had to have a laptop. to have a laptop to be part of that conference, uh, that one class that they, they were giving. And, um, I know Diane's been very good about what she already knows, what she's trained on, and brings it back, not only helps me, but has been helping others in the office too, you know, so, uh, it, it's, it's like, uh, it benefits everybody when she learns how to do something. So, I'm, I'm just saying, I, I don't, I don't get paid enough to buy a laptop, I need a laptop. So, I'd say that would be something in technology to get, uh, procure it some way, I, you know.
The town does have an IT budget, um, which obviously starts again July first, I don't think we can, we could manage that for this fiscal year, but it's certainly something I can add to the list-
Yeah.
And evaluate July first.
I think, and I think too, if we were to get a laptop in that sense, that we don't have to say, this is the town clerk laptop, you know, if the board of health was going to a, a meeting, and they needed a laptop, and the person there doesn't have it, or the assessors, or the fire department, or someone's going there, there's a, you know, you might save your file, but I mean, in that case, you, you get your, um, you know, you get your Wi-Fi hookup, you email whatever documents back to your account on your desktop at your office, and then maybe that might be a community-type laptop that can be used, so it's not really for storing files on, but anybody within the town would be able to access that.
Yep. Do we have one for our veterans?
Mr. Barber has a laptop, yes, and I also have one as well.
So, maybe we can get use out of those, instead of buying a little metal.
I think Lincoln's would be different.
Yeah, Mr. Barber's is a, is a Mac.
Not only that, but he probably saves his files.
He's got confidential stuff.
And he's got like social security.
That's a laptop, you don't want to go in there.
Yeah, you know, yeah.
Yeah, they're really, they're not very expensive.
They're not.
The one that I purchased, um, for the town, for the purposes of, um, budget meetings, was about three hundred dollars, and that included the, the software, so they're really not a lot.
That, that-
So, I, you know, I think we can probably wing it next, the next fiscal year.
That would, that, I'm, that's what I'm saying, I'm projecting, you know, a need for that, you know?
Yep, okay.
And you said what would bump up the, it would only be, I think, of getting Diane into the, the professional organizations.
Okay.
The, the other stuff, I think we're going to use with what we have, but that's the direction I'm working on, I'd like to, you know, have, we have, we'll have the, the bylaws beautifully done and accessible, and then, um, the dog license program, we're continually working on that. In fact, her program, she's helped other towns with what they were doing, they needed help, so, so we, they've helped me in the past, I've helped them, it's like, it's, it's, you know, that, that's worked out nicely.
Um, two other things you had mentioned about the, um, birth certificates, and I know going into the closet, um, do you think that you could get together those kind of, um, improvements that you'd like to see?
Yeah.
It's not a one-year, it's not a three-year?
Oh, it's, it's a long-range project.
A long range, and put that together, and get together with the capital planning, to see what, you know, if Blackstone's using a program, what does that cost, what does it entail, where is it going, how much, and then-
I could do that, Jen, sure.
And then look at your office, your, um-
Sure.
Your plan, and how much is it going to cost, and, not that we have money, but when we do get money, you know, they might be able to say, we're going to put so much towards per year as a capital plan, rather than, you know, oh, this year I want to do this, so that way it can really be planned out, and that there's just some thorough research as to how much everything costs.
Sure, I could do that, I'd be glad to.
And you might want to get, Joe, are you the, um, who's the capital planning, Kelly? Okay.
I think the great expense on that will be the labor on the data entry.
Yeah.
And if I can get someone that I'm, I'm satisfied with their professionalism and their, um, their work, yeah, that would be fine, you know. I am going to get, uh, some, a volunteer to come in, uh, soon and help with all my, at least a start would be the voter registration, I've got like, how would I say it, um, maybe, maybe a hundred or more, I don't know, that have to be filed in, you know, that are current, they're always changing. And, uh, I, I'm going to go off-site into Blackstone with Diane soon to see how they handle that. Right now, we just have it in a tall file cabinet, slight, and I, it's, it's okay, but I don't think it's necessarily, um, that good a system, and I, I'm, if it can be updated, we're going to try to, why reinvent the wheel, we'll, I'll visit around and see what other, 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 uh, town clerks are doing, so, so I'm trying to work within what we have and still improve, but I'm telling you, the, the first thrust was the, the codification of all the bylaws. Second one was the dog license program getting up to date, and now, this next thing is I'm going to be working on, uh, records, record, I think, uh, even the stuff that we have on file, there's, we're finding missed files in there, and things that shouldn't be in, and whatever, so that just takes time to do it, it's, and if I can get a volunteer, fine, but I have to be, you know, it's, it's a, it's a long-term thing, little by little, we're working at it. So, I'm, I'm, things are going well, we're happy, we're doing the best we can, and we're, we're getting along fine.
The last thing, you had mentioned about your office and space and having to have another desk area for input and a separate, I'm assuming a separate printer, is that what you were saying?
Well, we have to say, we'll have, we have to use the same printer, I think the state is going to give me a new printer, you know, because they, they're giving, now, I don't know if I have access to this, but I would like to be able to retain the printer that we, I'm currently using, if I can, because it works good, and use it for another office.
Because that has a direct line, yes, it has a ethernet line? Is that connected to like, like email and fax and stuff like that?
No, 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 no.
I always thought that there was a, like a-
No, this is strictly states-
Just their printer?
State things, no one else can go in, there's passwords, this, that, and the other thing, you know.
So, what are you, what are you looking at for that office? I mean, you mentioned it, but I don't know what-
I, I, I need another desk in, at a chair, okay?
You need space.
I need space, so it's, for the space we're going to-
So, you need space somewhere else to put some stuff?
Well, well, I talked with Helen about that, that's, that's not that big a problem, because-
Okay.
What we're going to use is some of those big files that are in the back office, where the supplies are.
Okay.
I've got some space that I can do there. We may move out a big, uh, file cabinet that can be locked, out into the hall somewhere near where the clock was.
Okay.
The other thing I want to get is one of those carts that you can transport things with, so we're not cat schlepping everything, so that could be used by everybody in the town hall, I mean, if they're moving any kind of records, because I, you have to be careful with some of these books and everything, you don't want to drop them or, or whatever, and plus, if we're going to be moving them, so, and we could probably store that, um, near where we have the, um, the ballot box thing in the hallway, so that, that's, that's all possible, you know? So, uh, I, I think, uh, that, that the desk and the chair probably are the most crucial thing that we need now, to get ready for the April arrival of the new state equipment.
Yep, okay.
You might just want to be careful if you're putting things behind the doorways, that they need to be-
Be able, open for access, yeah, yeah. Well, that, that would be my first, if it fits there, that would be good, I mean, maybe stick it in the safe room, but that's very tight in there, but, or maybe even over in this hallway over here or something, I mean, things are, it's, it's a small thing to just find out where, where that would be. So, um, is there anything else that I could, uh?
Nope, that's all I have.
No?
No, the only questions I would have to direct to the board and to the finance committee, um, I don't know that my town hall budget can handle the purchase of additional furniture and a cart right now.
Right.
Is that something that you'd like me to go forward with and request a transfer May first, or?
We're waiting for a car, so, so why first?
When are you going to, um-
Yeah.
To Blackstone and your other communities to see what they're doing? I don't want to go and put a transfer in, and then you find out that someone's using something else that might be more feasible, or less-
Well, I, I'd, I'd like to go to Blackstone later around this week with Diane, and, um, but, uh-
Well, I don't think going to Blackstone is going to affect your decision on the furniture, correct?
No, no, no.
So, that, I don't think is going to make a difference.
But I mean, maybe a, a better way or something else to do some of the records that we, we have.
Okay, so you're going there for record keeping?
Record keeping, yes, like that. And I've been getting things from the state about, uh, reminding us how we're supposed to keep our records in a, um, temperature-controlled room, and all that, all, all that, so-
Very nice of them to-
Now you're looking at fantasy world.
I, I know, but that's, that's, that's-
We have a, yeah, a temperature-controlled building.
Oh, yeah, but, but I-
Thank you for your concern.
Yeah, but, but, so, I, but, but, I mean, I, I, I think we've made great improvements in the safe room in the past year, or so since, we've painted clean, we've moved other fi- other, uh, bookcases in and whatever, it's, it's really, it's really looked, it looks pretty good, it's, it's, we've improved that a lot. So, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm rather pleased, I hope you people are pleased with the work at my office and my assistant did, so, is there anything else I can answer for you?
None of this time.
No.
Okay.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
What amount would that be, Helen?
I'm sorry?
Furniture, cart?
Office supplies, town hall office supplies.
Well, how much were you thinking?
I haven't even looked at it.
Nobody's looked at it.
I haven't even looked into it. For a desk and the chair, yeah.
If you buy, if you buy through corporate resources, like where you usually get your supplies and stuff, that'd be ridiculous. You got, you got shop open for something used?
Let me see if we have something used at my office, that we're trying to-
You also want to make sure it's-
We're in a cleaning-
Conducive.
Cleaning mode right now.
Small.
Where's, uh, at, at work?
Or combining?
I might be able to find, just a standard desk.
Small, something small.
Kind of small, but big enough.
Well, we, we, we could start with anything we could get, and then- Two filing cabinets and a two-by-four. Yeah, I mean, you know.
I can call, that's where we got, um, the three that we have in the, the collector's office, um, those came from the store.
Yeah, sometimes, and, and, and I say it half-kiddingly, but filing cabinets and a two-by-four, I mean, they can make a workstation that's against the wall, you can have your file system with a leg area, you know, so you can have more file spacing, rather than desk drawers, especially for an office like yours, and they could almost mount a workstation that would house your things.
Provide a nice piece of finished plywood, it's about thirty-six bucks.
So, um, you know, but I'm just-
Three-quarter inch plywood, pop.
You know, you see a lot of those kind of desks now, where they're not drawers, because how many drawers do you need for your paper clips and pencils, where there are a file cabinet and, and the, you know, the, your workstation? I think, not just looking at an office supply, but some kind of, um, even more into like the workstations, not beautiful, but-
Yeah, a couple, two drawer cabinets and a piece of laminated prefab top.
But just maximize your space in the room.
That's what a lot of companies do, do, for space and, and funding.
So, but that's, that's her office, and she'll-
Okay.
Works best.
Public forum, press public forum, anyone? Nobody, okay. Uh, correspondence, we have just a couple things. One is NSTAR is, is, is letting us know that they're doing their, uh, this spring, they're going to be spreading herbicides along the, uh, power and gas lines, right aways through, through this municipality, they only have gas here, they don't have, they don't own any electric lines in Millville, right? NSTAR?
Um, yeah, they do.
They, they, oh, they own the electric lines? I thought it was Boston Edison. Okay, and then, um, they have a website, if you'd like information for the pesticides, um, they use pesticides, they use mechanical and other natural, uh, control methods as well, but they have a website, it's K E N E R S O N, group.com slash VMP slash two thousand thirteen slash NSTAR. You can go on that website and learn any, any more, or you can stop down the town hall and get, get this information as well. So, just a letter, there's a few pages here, but, um, I'm not going to read it, it shows every town in the, in the Commonwealth that they, that they do go through, um, so it's just, it's something they do all the time, every year they send this out, and, uh, just that by law, they have to notify us that they're doing it, so, uh, that's that. The other thing is, uh, uh, this week, John's gone, this week we, we couldn't send out our bills, uh, bill payments, um, because warrants were not signed, uh, they, they were needed to be signed by last Wednesday morning, and this is, um, I've noticed this, it's, it's like a growing trend we have going on, that we, we're not coming in or forgetting, and I, I know we're all busy in our day-to-day lives, but we've got to remember that when Masha calls to sign warrants, that we, we've got to do it, especially when it's payroll, but, and then, not only the payroll, when, if we're late paying, uh, the electric bill or, or any other of our utility bills, um, some of them are slapping us with a late fee, so, which, with our budget, we can't afford the bill, never mind the late fee to go with it, so if we, if, if as a board, we can try and make, and, and I've been guilty of it as well, uh, so if we can-
I was here Tuesday night, I didn't even think of it.
Yeah, no, I know.
It was in my calendar for Monday, and when I was here Tuesday.
It happens, and I understand that it happens, where if we can make sure that, plus, it's going to make, uh, Lisa and Masha's job a little bit easier to, uh, not have to keep going back to something, so that they can just get through something completely and move on to the next hundred items they got, so, and that's it for correspondence. Uh, we have some appointments and resignations, we have one appointment, and that's for the emergency management, Steve wasn't coming back for this, right?
No.
All right. Uh, I am requesting that the board of selectmen appoint John Hadley to the emergency management department, I believe John will be an asset to the, to the department and the town. John has many years working for the town in various public safety areas, thank you for your consideration, respectfully submitted by Stephen Ferno, the EMD. So, what's the question?
Make the motion to appoint John Hadley through June thirtieth, two thousand thirteen?
A second, second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, we have executive secretary report.
Uh, yeah, just very briefly, I just wanted to let the board know that, um, Steve Ferno and his crew have been working in the Mema room, um, they've taken up, with the assistance of our temporary help here, the, the floor, um, they've replaced a sump pump that we didn't even know we had in this building, um, which apparently was not working, um, so they are working, um, hard down there to get that room back in order, um, and there will be additional work, uh, coming up in the future with painting and, and cleaning up, and then determining, um, what to replace the floor with, so, um, that is moving along, and I do want to thank them for all their hard work, I do appreciate it, they've, um, saved town quite a bit of money, um, by doing that, and especially on the installation of the, um, the sump pump, saved us quite a bit on the plumber, so we thank them, and that's it.
So, with, with that, um, anybody listening that, that would like to help the town through these tough economic times, um, but can't do it financially, but would like to help with some labor, and willing to volunteer to the EMS to help clean up that room, it's, it definitely needs some, somebody with some skilled hands, you know, or just a strong back, um, they, quite a few times, I see them here late at night, um, working, you know, for absolutely nothing, but just to try and help, do things to help out the town, so anybody that's willing to give a, an hour or two, or here and there, um, I'm sure, if you've got a hold of Steve Ferno, um, either at the fire station, or, or, you know, if you know where he, where he lives or whatever, there's always a way to find Steve, so, um, he would greatly appreciate that, as, as well as the rest of the town would, would appreciate it, thank you. That was it, huh, Helen?
That's it.
Okay, any old business?
No.
I have none. So, um, the new business, we have the EMS service plan, uh, EMS zone service application. Now, I remember, uh, probably two years ago, we had an issue, that we were doing a couple of things wrong, I guess, and the state was, um, concerned, and that's all been addressed.
It has, and since that time, the chief and the captain have, um, taken the care to be sure that we update it on an annual basis accordingly, and as required by law, um, so the changes that have been made, that you will be signing off on tonight, you can't really see them on your copy, I don't think, they're highlighted on the original, they're simply administrative changes.
Okay.
Nothing that really affects-
Yeah, I remember that was their only issue, was that. Yeah, I remember that was their only issue, was that.
Yeah, yeah, nothing that affects the content of the plan. Um, they're just customary changes that will, you know, they'll update on an annual basis.
Okay. We got our chief second chair.
Yeah, the chief has already signed off.
Chief's already signed it.
And the board would be, um, voting to authorize the chair to sign on behalf of the board.
Everybody have...
Yeah, I'll motion for the chair to sign the EMS service own plan application.
I'll second that.
I just have a question, which is just a matter of discussion.
Right.
Are, with Mendon, and I don't remember reading this in our contract with them,
Right.
but they're alternative, um, center is the Upton Police Department? Is that something that we should probably make sure that we have in our regional agreement? Or is this superseded? Is it...
Um, this is strictly for, for ambulance, so if, if we call Mendon and Mendon's not there, then I guess Upton would be the next.
Yeah, 'cause it's in the inventory of communication systems.
Yeah.
And our primary is the Mendon Police Department.
Right, so if our dispatch is busy, we automatically go to, goes to Upton.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not in, it's not in the regional agreement, but it's just part of Mendon's system. That's just how they are, so, yep.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to be sure.
And there have actually been occasions where we've had people in town, um, try to reach in, they end up in Upton, so it, it does happen.
You go, Mr. Chair.
Any more questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have the town hall existing conditions. Okay, so, uh, Keesel, is it Keesel or Castle?
Castle.
Castle with Boos. Booze, sorry. Um, associates did the evaluation on the town hall, a somewhat evaluation, and they're telling us...
No, this is a proposal.
Yeah. They, they, they're proposing that it'll cost fifteen thousand eight hundred dollars to tell us how much it will cost to fix the building.
Good luck with that.
So...
I don't need twenty fifteen thousand dollars to tell me which one to go with.
You know, as we all know, isn't gonna be cheap to repair this, this structure. It's got, uh, insulation issues, it's got structural issues, it's got, I don't know, it's just two big things, you know, so it's... It's...
That price is absurd.
Why don't we get professionals that do the work to give us...
Well, the problem is, if you, if you wanna apply for a grant and you don't have, um, not this particular firm, but if, if you don't have an engineering, structural or architectural engineer stamp on your proposal, then your grant application gets tossed. Sometimes it's not worth getting a grant.
I haven't seen anybody writing any grants, all looking for...
But if, if any tax money is used to pay for the project, even one dollar, it has to go prevailing wage. If, if it's done completely through donations, that's a different story. But if it's done through one dollar of, of tax, uh, raised money, then it has to be prevailing wage. Which then puts us in the bonus. I mean, just, just for instance, I mean, you got Boston University was a, was a five hundred million dollar project. They did this, and it ended up going, um, through PLAs, which is a, a project labor agreement. It ended up all prevailing wage, and it added a hundred and fifty million dollars to that job, same job. That's what happens. So, that's the unfortunate issue. All you need is one dollar of tax money, changes the whole project.
Should we get with Vencom and Capital and talk about a, I guess, same thing again, no money, but start about a capital line item for the town hall, for a town hall renovations, which would take us five, ten years, and then, you know, save some money so that when we need our engineering to do it. Or even if something comes up midstream and we need to, you know, something has to be fixed and that we have an account there that we can, um, you know, at least start planning. You know, this getting whacked at town meeting for ten, twenty thousand dollars isn't fun. And, and people quite fr- so if you go to town meetings and say, "We need ten because we already have eight in an account that we've been saving for future renovations", I, I think, you know, there's some foresight in that, and, um, you know, people are a little more willing to go, "Oh, it's, you know, we've already been saving". I, I think it's worth a conversation with them and talk about a, a capital line item for renovations. I mean, I mean, everyone knows it's gonna have to, there are some renovations that are gonna have to be done.
Next time we have a meeting, we'll ask them.
We did set up, uh, something similar for all of our emergency, um, management equipment, like fire engines and police cars. We do have that line item now that we say for the future, so when we need an ambulance or it's not, "All right, we need two hundred and fifty thousand dollars now", you know, and I think that you're right, we should have something, some...
We know this building needs, or municipal building renovations. It doesn't have to be Longfellow, you know, but you don't want anything else kind of sucking it up or eating it up.
We had the roof on the police apartment by surprise. Fortunately, it's a small roof.
Right.
It was, you know, and I don't mean to say only, but it was only, only like six thousand. But it, you know, a building like this with the, the school as we know is coming next week. Uh, at that meeting, I mean, look at that cost.
One of the policies and procedures of the capital planning committee is to, along with your capital request, attach an estimate. So, you know, I don't know if they're willing to waive that policy, but generally if a capital request is submitted without the required documentation, it's rejected.
It's worth a conversation.
Paul.
I don't think they're gonna reject it personally, now that they got a bid without bringing in a consultant. Ridiculous.
Obviously, there's no money in capital to put towards the building. At this point, it's a fix the stuff as it breaks kind of situation.
Yep.
I hear from all these different departments about, um, you know, if there's a grant available, if there's a grant available, if there's a grant available. Well, I'll tell you what, if there's a grant out there to renovate this town hall, at that point, once one has been identified, that we have a good chance of applying for or receiving, then we'll have the evaluation done. We don't need to have the evaluation done now and have it sit in a, in a folder for possibly a grant sometime in the future to come down the road. If we identify a grant that has that requirement, at that point, we can do the evaluation. We could turn it around quick and have it done right away as a, as a contingency of the grant.
There still needs to be some type of renovation plan. Whether it's, I'm not saying to take our first fifteen thousand and spend it on this, but I'm saying that we should have some money in there for the things that come up. And I know, I know we're not gonna have the money now.
Oh, I totally agree with, with set aside X amount of dollars per year, a couple thousand dollars, five thousand dollars, whatever, stuff it away into an account labeled Town Hall Renovations.
Right.
Keep it as general as possible. But, but to say we're gonna spend fifteen thousand dollars because that's gonna be a requirement of a grant. Okay, find me the grant first, and, and then I'll look at spending the fifteen thousand dollars to have the evaluation done, so that we can get the grant.
No, but if you have an engineer who's in, you're gonna want it within a timeframe of the grant, or, or the timeframe of the work. There's no point paying now for something that won't get done for five years.
Right, and it's all speculation, it's...
If we had fifteen thousand right now to spend on this...
We'd spend it somewhere else.
We'd be lucky, but we need to, we'd need to hang on to that, 'cause God forbid the boiler went here.
Mr. Chairman, if I could speak to Mr. Walet's point. The, the purpose of obtaining this, um, proposal wasn't specifically to obtain a grant someday in the future. That's an added benefit of having it. However, the main purpose of obtaining this proposal is because of the various things going wrong with this building. That as the facility manager in this building, I've had to experience over the past several years. I am not a building engineer, nor do we employ a building engineer. None of the people working in this building are capable of addressing or are able to address many of the issues that are going on. We have roof leaks, we have structural issues, we have insulation issues, we have heating issues. And for the past year, we've been working with trying to get, um, vendors in to give us estimates, but it's taken up a great deal of time. They cancel, they never show up, they come in and they ask us questions. I, I don't know what they're talking about. Um, we've got bat infestation in the attic, we've got bird infestations in the walls, we've got possibilities of mold and mildew and dampness in the basement, which thankfully, Mr. Walet is one of the people who, who has addressed that issue on behalf of the town, so maybe that's one issue we won't have to deal with. But there are a variety of other issues that need to be addressed that perfect, frankly, I cannot address. So, this was, in my conversations with peers in many of the, um, surrounding towns at various municipal conferences, this is what is recommended. You need to have a plan, you need to know what the condition of the building is in, and is it even worth fixing it? If something goes, do we even want to fix the bat problem or the bird problem, or is it even worth putting a dime into this building at this point? Or would it be beneficial to look at one of the town-owned pieces of land, um, that Mr. Layden pointed out and put something small on it for, for less money than repairing this building? I don't know. That's not my expertise. So, that, that's the reason for this.
Yeah.
I think we also asked for this too.
Yeah.
What, what is wrong with the building? And then I, we was hoping that maybe there was an area town that had someone who's qualified to come up and do that. And you exhausted those, those findings.
Qualified person wants fifteen thousand dollars. Tell us something that we already pretty much know.
I just, I, I just, I... It, it actually sounds like she's got a pretty good handle on what's wrong.
Everything.
It's just calling, I mean, I, I don't see how, uh, what, once you get this evaluation, you're back in the same exact situation of having to call the vendors to come fix the stuff.
Well, I guess just to throw out an example, I know we have roof leaks. Some are significant roof leaks. I don't know if they're bad enough where the roof is gonna cave in over the Board of Health Office. I don't know if the significant odors that they're experiencing on the second floor are because of the dead birds inside the walls, because of the bat, um, droppings in the attic, or if it's mold in the attic right above the Board of, I mean, there are just a number of issues that need to be addressed. And quite frankly, I don't know enough about building engineering to honestly believe what some of these vendors tell me. It's just beyond my capability, so if the town can't or doesn't want to address it in this fashion, my suggestion and recommendation is going to be to hire an engineer, a town engineer, a facility manager who is experienced in something like that.
You hire an engineer to go do this, Helen, and the engineer's gonna call a roofer to go see what's wrong with the roof. And he's gonna report back to the engineer and tell him what's wrong with the roof. That's exactly how it works. Get ask Paul, he's gonna tell you the same thing. Engineers call him, confirms, call him all the time to go evaluate something, give them that for what's wrong, how much we're talking. And then he gives it to them, they give it back to you.
I mean, I mean fifteen thousand dollars, it sounds like an awful lot of money to me for them to hire subs to do the evaluation and for them to just put it all together.
And ninety percent of the subs do it for nothing. They do the asking for nothing.
And, and I do understand Helen's point about it's just, it isn't, it is a lot of work. It, it's a, a huge time suck, there's no question about it, but, but, you know...
I understand that, but...
You know, we don't have the, the time or the, or the money or the wherewithal to address these things, and we certainly, certainly don't have the, the funds to address what they're gonna come up with. You know, they're gonna come back with over a million dollars in repairs guaranteed. By the time you add the roof and the, the structural issues and repointing the building and, and, you know, I, I mean, you know, you're looking at
Well, I know.
Mil- a million plus.
But one of the big questions they will answer, I think, is should we do it? I mean, I can go the, in the other direction, and I can use, as Mr. Poole had mentioned, vendors or people in the field. I can have pest companies come in and give me estimates on the bad issue. I can have burner people come in and give me estimates on the furnace. I can have roofing people come in and give me estimates, and then once I have these estimates, should I have the work done?
Well, that's what I'm saying.
I don't know. Is it serious enough that I, well, is it, is it, is it an issue where the building could be, you know, a health hazard or a safety danger for the employees? I don't know.
Well, you can hand out booties and gas masks, like they come in the door every morning. But I mean, it just seems like, it, it seems like it's a, it's a lot of money for them to tell us that we need to spend a lot of money.
Right.
Then we need to gather professionals who will donate their time to come in to look at the roof, to look at this, and who are our community members who might be experienced and say, "We need you because we don't have fifteen thousand, but we need to prioritize what's going on here. What's legitimate health, structural issues, what needs to be addressed first?"
What's the bid level that has to go out the bid, twenty-five?
Yeah. I mean, I can get you lots of teachers to come in, but, I mean, there's no offense to any of the women out there, but, um, between Helen and I, I don't think we know a lot of contractors, of people of sort, but some of you gentlemen are in the trade of that, and maybe you could find out, is there people in town that we could maybe get everyone here on a sad day and do good for the community and kind of go through the building and find out what's going on? And people kind of give their opinions and, you know, it may not be as thorough, it may not, but it will give us at least a, a beginning.
Even if you, even if you have to pay a few hundred dollars to have somebody coordinate that effort, or a couple thousand even, but, I mean, I, I just...
This is seventy, eight hundred for field inspections. Five thousand to draft a report and three thousand to present it.
Wow, three thousand dollars standing up here like Paul's...
To, to present a report.
Thank you.
I, I mean...
But this, you know what, there's a lot of people in town. I mean, I can think of, you know, I, you guys know more than I do, but I think Lincoln, I think, you know what I mean, your, your plumbers, your heating guys, your electrical guys who, who live in town, who work in town, who, you know, who know something, like, you know what? We're looking at our town hall and it's gonna cost us X number of dollars and so much on your tax bills in the next twenty years. Would you mind coming down and just giving us an hour?
Is there an access to the...
Can you ask them just to volunteer to come down and, and check? I mean, I, it takes some negotiating, it takes some begging and some pleading. And some, you know, calling in those favors of friendships.
You know what might be another avenue is, when you buy a house, you have a home inspector that comes in. Now, it's up to, what, six or seven hundred dollars to have that done. I find it hard to believe that if you were in the market for a commercial building, there wouldn't be someone that specialized in that.
There is. There is.
So, like a home inspector, but for a commercial building.
Unfortunately, when people see municipality, they figure everybody's got deep pockets and they just got that.
But I mean, maybe that's an avenue to look at, and, no?
I'm doing it right now. I have, I take care of fourteen buildings, all commercial, big buildings. We're selling and refinancing seven buildings. I've gone through eight people so far on these eight buildings. You got the fire analysts, you got the electricians, you got the carpenters, you got the engineers. It's just a whole group of people that pu- that have a specialty in each thing. They put, compile it all together, they give it to an engineer, and then the engineer gives it to the company and say, "This is what your building is worth, this is what it's worth to sell, this is what kind of money you can get out of it."
But that's an appraisal.
That's a commercial building.
But that's an appraisal.
An appraisal to reevaluate or to sell or to fix. It tells them exactly where the building stands.
'Cause it will say the, it's worth this much, but there's X number of repairs.
Right, they give you basically, Jennifer, the way it works is they give you like four different avenues. If you want money, this is what it's, if you wanna sell it, this is what it's worth. If you want this thing to be a hundred percent perfect, this is what it takes. Everything is all categorized in a, in a folder, exactly right down to the...
Looks like you might be our man to coordinate this, John.
It's quite a, it's quite a, it's quite a detail.
But I mean, just to bring people in.
We can also talk to Kelly too, 'cause she manages commercial buildings.
Yeah, I mean, this, that's what I'm saying, now you're sitting around and you're talking, you know, people are doing things, there's a way to get...
That's what I do. I don't manage per se the building, but in another aspect, I do the physical end of the building. I make sure all the contractors do what we paid for. That's what I do. The, the, the property manager pays the bills, I don't worry about that. But I, physical is what I do.
But we need to prioritize and what's important and what is immediate. Like, when I got the email on the back, I think I emailed you back, like, this could be a... Like, when I got the email on the back, I think I emailed you back, like, this could be a potentially serious thing. My sister lived in Tennessee and the senior center behind them, the second floor, was infested with bats. The building was condemned. It was torn down, it was bubbled, and the bat feces and everything else that remained was disposed of, and it was considered hazardous waste.
And pneumonia.
And this could be a very serious issue.
I'll tell you what.
So we have, we have people in this building, we have public coming into this building. If there is a health issue or a structural issue, they need to be addressed. Like, if I know there's a hole in the, now I know there's a hole over, possible hole over the Board of Health, something happens, who's liable for that? We knew about it and we did nothing. So, I mean, you have to do something. I'm not saying we can afford it, but you have to at least start the process of the plan of what needs to be done.
You're almost better off not knowing. I mean, I know it sounds terrible, but you're almost better off not knowing.
It's a good idea, but I don't think we can...
I think Mrs. Dean used the correct word. And the word is prioritize. And not only prioritize within the building, but we need to make this building a priority. Because this is the hub. This is, the town runs out of this building, without this building.
I agree.
There's no assessing, there's no tax collecting, there's no sending out bills. If, if the town, and we'll need the finance committee's assistance, if the town is in that dire straits that we can't afford to get an evaluation of this building and have it repaired, then we need to start cutting significant other services.
I'm sorry, I just can't justify it. Helen spent fifteen thousand dollars.
A council on aging and a senior center and a library and a van should be the least of your worries. And I'm sorry if I'm going to walk away from this table as an unpopular person, but this building has to be a priority because without it, there is no running the town of Millville.
It's true.
So, this might be a question for Marilyn, but can, can a transfer be done from the reserve fund to a capital line item?
No.
Are you sure?
I'm ninety percent sure. I believe the town meeting has to vote to put money into a capital fund.
It's an article at town meetings to put money into.
But can, but can that money come from the reserve fund?
Yeah, the town meeting votes too, sure.
Because, you know, what I, what I would propose is, we have a baseline, a not to exceed number for an evaluation. We can continue to do research, try to find other ways to do it, whatever. But, but if at the town meeting, there's still money left in reserve fund, maybe it would behoove us before the books close for FY13 to take that fifteen thousand dollars and put it in the capital line item from the reserve fund.
Because it's not needed to me.
Well, it's not a, it's not a typical thing that people transfer from, from the FY13's reserve fund to a capital line item. So, and, and, you know, if things are held relatively at bay before the end of the fiscal year, there might be some money left in there to do that.
Kessel, are they, are, is that one the one through the school?
Yes.
I'm just wanting to try to call a few other firms.
Yeah, I had, at the meeting Wednesday night, the chairman and I attended. I did mention, I only use this firm because we just happen to use them for the elementary school. But, I mean, I can certainly get prices from other firms. What we've found is that they're all ballpark. I mean, within a thousand or two dollars of each other, they usually come through about the same. But architects and engineers are exempt from thirty B, so you don't have to go up too good for that. But I remind you that any work done to a municipal building, it's not even under thirty B. It's the design of selection law, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a chapter forty-nine, I think it is. It's a completely different procurement law with a complete set of different guidelines. So, when you start getting into doing work in a municipal building, you have to follow a different set of procurements. So, I guess then it's the decision of the board. I don't know if you'd like to vote to not approve, not accept this?
I think I'd rather have some more conversation. And I definitely believe that it's needed, it's warranted. It's, I mean, I was the one who asked, what's the shape of our building? Let's put it all down together. So, I just like to have more conversation. I don't want to go yes, go with this one, or I think it really entails some more conversation with some more heads.
Yeah. Table to the next meeting?
I, I, I mean, I definitely agree, we need to know what's wrong and what needs to be done first. Mr. Harris?
I, I like the idea of trying to get, look at this room. Guy in management, electrician, plumber, handyman. And five or six people here. You go through this town, you've got builders in this town, you've got everything else. Why couldn't we put out some kind of a bulletin of need? That this is what we want to do. We want to evaluate the town hall, we want to see what's wrong, we want to see what the issues are. We'd like to establish a voluntary committee made out of businessmen to help us. She doesn't have the expertise, but these people do have expertise. They can make suggestions, they can come together, you can get a committee and have them go through the whole town hall and see what we need. And go from there. Spending fifteen thousand dollars is like throwing the money out the window. We got the, we got the capability, we need volunteer help. Let's go out and solicit and see if we can get some people to come together and make a committee of yours.
I think eventually you will have to spend for this. You may. You know, if it's one project or a grant or things down the road, you may need an engineer plan. But I think initially, we could get away with at least prioritizing the things.
I would pause. Find out what's wrong, then you know what you would need a grant for, and then you can look to see if there's a grant. And if you need that grant for, get the engineer. Look what they did to the elementary school. How much money we spent there? Then they're going to supervise the project, they want another eighty-five thousand dollars to supervise the project? Then they want you to spend a million dollars for something you can get done for three to five hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Yep.
Doesn't make any sense.
Look at the senior center, look at the grant. The grant we got for the senior center. What it costs for the senior center, just our portion of it could have built the senior center. Without the grant.
Yeah, we could have did the senior center for half with volunteer, with the money that we used fundraising us. And it would have been on a foundation.
With a basement.
With a regular roof.
I would just say, I prefer spending money if you can get money back. But you could get somebody to make an assessment for a lot less money than fifteen grand. And if we could get a volunteer committee of people that are talented enough, we could get it done. You're only talking about one building here.
What is wrong with the heat?
I don't know, that's why we need the assessment.
Well, if you don't have heat in your office, or it comes on, goes on.
I'm told that the burner is on its way out. Some technicians come in and say, you're going to be needing a new compressor. It's not worth replacing what's there. Your thermostats are going, the pneumatic, the pneumatic system's on its way out. I have no idea.
That's, yeah, that's all the compressor. The compressor, you just changed that, that's a long ago.
I got, I saw my house. Just had a house inspection done on the house. It'd take four hundred and seventy-five dollars. They got a twenty-five page of everything that was in the house, what kind of condition it was, what needed repair, what was it, what the state was, was A, B, C, D, N, A, whatever.
Is there name and number on the bottom of that? No, I'm serious, is there name and number on the bottom of your report? Is that something you could call and say to this person, we know you do home inspecting? Would you be willing to come into the town hall?
Yeah, so if it's five or six or seven times...
I'm not kidding.
Five or six or seven times five hundred dollars is a hell of a lot less than fifteen.
But a lot of times, nine times out of ten, home inspectors...
They don't give you the price of the fix.
They're not commercial. They're not engineers or architects either.
I can do it, well, I used to be able to do a home inspection because I took the assessors class. And I took a secondary class.
Because there's home inspectors that tell you exactly what's wrong with your electrical system that don't know a thing about electricity.
Right.
Same thing with the plumbing.
This guy, this guy picked out, this guy picked out things. Preventive valve's not working, hole in the flue. Wires in the box, there were three wires in one, two wires in another breaker. There weren't GFIC breakers on there. The tub, the jacuzzi wasn't grounded. He knew what he was doing. He knew what every piece is there. I mean, if you know what roofs are, you can look at this roof, it's a hundred times bigger. You look at the roof, is it, does it need repair? Does it not need repair? Where's it leaking? What's the, what's the problem?
I think we all agree that it needs to be done. It's just, what's the avenue we're going to take to find out what needs to be done?
If Helen wants to call one or two other engineering firms and let them...
Yeah, one of the most significant aspects of the evaluation, of the proposal for the evaluation is the structure of the building. These are structural architects and engineers. That's what they specialize in. And when you get the evaluation from them, you want that PE stamp on that evaluation telling you the condition of your structure. Ultimately, that's, that's the main objective of this.
Can we skip the draft report for five thousand and just go to the final report for three thousand?
We can probably negotiate with them. I can certainly beg and...
Do we really need a draft report?
Ask them if they'll do the field survey for free and we'll pay the eight thousand.
You know?
Ask them if they'll do it until we can get a grant and pay them.
I've never seen a draft report cost more than a final report.
And the other thing, I just call your attention to Brooks's point. If we do get various vendors, if there are people out there in town who own businesses or in a certain trade, we'd welcome them in, into the building. But we will require either a certificate of insurance that they're fully covered or we are going to request that they sign off on a general lease of liability. Because if they get injured in this building, you know, we're in trouble.
We need to do something. Just to figure out what it is.
All right.
We keep it on the agenda?
Yeah, we don't want to keep, this horse has been beat enough. So, got the sign on, at the beginning of the road. So, that's another one. Four thousand dollars. Now, I was thinking about this. For a wood cop sign, which I'll agree, they're expensive. And I will definitely say, I know Sunshine Sign very well.
If this wouldn't be wood though, this would be a weatherproof.
Could you see it?
I know them very well and they do very good quality work. They work for some of the biggest firms out of Boston and Worcester. They're a good quality company, but that's what we're paying for is the quality. I mean, I'd be willing to put the time in myself to fix that. It's water, it can be fixed, it can be, the paint can be scraped clean. I'll do it.
We already, actually, we did that two or three years ago. We, somebody came, they removed it. A gentleman on Ironstone Street, I believe it was, who does that for a living, scraped it, repainted it, put it back together, and he said, this is it. You will not be able to repair it again.
Where is this funding?
And like I said, Wednesday night at the meeting that we were at, I said, you know, just for instance, Pomfret, Connecticut, very ritzy, rich town. Their town hall sign is this big, says Town Offices with an arrow. And they got a building not quite as big as this, but it's old. And that's it. I mean, we could purchase, we have a nice sign that we spent, what, a thousand bucks on? Or more, right here? So if we have a sign at the end of the driveway or at the end of Fletcher Road that says Town Offices with an arrow for a hundred, two hundred bucks, who wouldn't like to have this nice work of art out at the street for four thousand dollars?
Where was this funding coming from?
We gotta prioritize our spending, you know?
The reason why this was on the agenda is because I had asked the finance committee how they wanted me to proceed, whether they would like me to add this into my FY14 budget or if it was something they were going to fund in a different way. And I think ultimately, I don't know if it was by vote, but I think the general consensus of the finance committee was not to proceed at all with a new sign. So that since the board, selectmen didn't have a quorum Wednesday night, the chair asked that this be put on the agenda. In my conversations with Dave and Kevin Leduke at Sunshine Sign, they can certainly work with us, we can make the sign smaller. We can likely reduce the cost of it. But ultimately, it's up to the board. If you want to go with something much less expensive to nonexistent, that's certainly a prerogative as the Board of Selectmen. My responsibility as your executive secretary is to give you the option, to tell you the sign is rotting away, it's going to have to be removed, there'll be nothing there. Just give me the guidance and tell me what you would like me to do, and I'm happy to follow through.
I will, I will be honest that for some reason, I thought this was tied in with the historical, maybe because...
No, they won't let us do that. We tried to do that.
For whatever reason, I thought it was, I thought the funding either had been approved or was tied into the historical. So with that being said, I, I can't in good conscience give four thousand dollars for a sign out front when our senior center and our library and our other departments, I mean, could very well turn around and say, there's no raises, there's no this, there's... I can't in good conscience spend four thousand dollars on a sign at this point.
I think...
Me. I say until it falls over them.
I think Paul remembers last year when we voted to approve the money to put the laminate on the back of the bulletin board. That was knowing that in the future, when that wood sign rotted, it was gone. No more. And that's why we spent the money on that laminate. Am I correct, Paul?
Absolutely. And I remember the question being asked multiple times in multiple ways, just for the commitment purpose of it, as far as, okay, we're going to spend this money now because the guy who fixed it told us it's only going to last a couple more years if they want it out front. When that goes, it goes.
What does the marquee say? Millville Police?
Longfellow Municipal Center, Town Offices, Police Department.
Not this, the marquee, the police marquee.
Oh, Millville Police, I think, just says Millville Police.
I'm wondering if it's, yeah, worthy of changing it to Millville Town Offices slash Police Station.
In the interest of directing people in the right, to the right street, because this sign is kind of far in, I agree with that. I, you know, I like the idea of if we get something with the same font that's on the back of this thing, you know, eighteen by twenty-four, with the town seal in the middle of it, a wrap on aluminum, top, Millville Town Offices with an arrow. Just enough so that when you're driving up the road, you go, oh, that's the way the town hall is. And then when you come in, you see the nice, big, bigger, nicer looking sign, and you know you're there.
I mean, you can, you can get a small town seal. You can have Brian look at the, the people who make the signs for the street. A square sign, even green or blue, whatever color with the town seal and says Town Offices with an arrow with one on each side of the Fletcher Street sign for when that does fall over. That's going to cost us maybe a couple hundred.
We got the Fletcher Street sign that we already own the post. So we just save thirty bucks on the post.
So, you know, I just, I can't spend four thousand dollars when we're talking, you know, five minutes ago about structural damage or, not damage, but structural issues with the town hall.
We need that four grand for the boiler. Just to purchase a boiler, never mind installing.
No.
No, I'm just saying.
No, I'm just saying, right now...
We need to put four grand towards it.
I mean, it's nice, but there's wants and there's needs. And this is a, this is a want, it's not a need.
So, we're not going to...
I make a motion to...
Tell Sunshine, thank you very much, but...
Do you want that in the motion?
No, that's fine, I get the point.
Just telling them we're very frugal and...
We will keep the proposal for...
All right, then we have systems administration, but guess what? I have no paperwork on that.
You had asked me to, actually, the board, the last time we met with finance, I think, as a quorum, asked me to put that on. I had explained that there's been some overage on the labor of the systems administration budget. And you had asked me to put that on the agenda, so that's why it's there.
Yep, so, the, I know that you had computer issues this year, which caused Lonny Tinio's labor to go up and about from Worldband, but... Is there a lot of it? And I know Valley Tech donated lots of hours to the senior center, which relieved us...
Well, they installed a couple of used computers. But, I mean, they don't address systems issues... Well, they installed a couple of used computers, but I mean, they don't address systems issues on the computers that we currently own.
So they would just teach it?
They don't have the capability, they would need the passwords and things like that.
All right, so...
What I've actually requested of Worldband in asking for the FY14 proposal is to give me two different proposals. One for police and fire, and one for the government side. Because police and fire are taking up quite a bit of it. Twenty-eight, twenty-eight percent. Actually, twenty-eight, thirty, thirty percent, thirty-two.
Did a lot of that have to do with regional dispatch? Could we get some of that money through that budget?
Yeah, it's quite a significant percent that's just police-fire, which is dispatch-related, it's the cruisers and the laptops, it's the fire department, I mean, there's a lot involved. A lot of it was the senior center this year, and the town clerk. So, I just feel as though, I feel horrible having to come to the board and to the finance committee to say I need to increase my budget. Ultimately, though, it's not because of overage that I'm causing, it's overage that other departments are causing, so... I don't know how you'd like me to proceed, but...
Boards that aren't familiar with the system, and they call them...
It's not just that, a lot of it is errors, I mean, like the police and fire, they all are very familiar with the system. And I know the chief, and you know, as frugal as he is, he's not going to call unless they really need assistance.
What kind of money are you talking, Helen? Do you have a number?
I don't have the number, I don't have my budget with me.
What are they charging per hour? Or is it just a straight-up contract?
I don't have it in front of me. It's weird, our contract is, includes ten hours is included a month in our contract. Once we go beyond the ten, we charge, it's various hourly rates depending on the time of day and the reason and who comes out.
Can we carry hours month to month? So it's a hundred and twenty a year?
We do, he will let us do that, but we've never had extra.
Well, we have to, but we're limited to ten hours a month.
Well, who's calling? Do they call through a central person who can keep tally?
Police calls on their own, everybody else does come through me, the governmental departments come through me.
Maybe we need just to keep a check on it. What's immediate, you know?
Can you have a number?
Usually, it's immediate, I mean, if I've got the town clerk saying I can't get into my computer, I have got to get somebody here so that they can get her in. If the treasure collector lost the payroll system, if they come in Monday morning and payroll's gone, we need to get them here. I mean, there are a lot more glitches with the systems we have, partly because the software is somewhat antiquated, we can't afford new software. We have to work with what we have, so...
Can you come up with a number for next meeting and then we can discuss it?
Well, I already did, I tacked on, I think it was an extra thousand to the budget. And that's what created this dialogue, is you had asked me to put it on for that extra thousand, so...
All right, well, it is what it is, I mean, gotta have it.
Now, this new, this new state computer that we get for the clerk, I didn't know we needed it.
It's a perfect example, it's going to be our IT budget that has to do with it.
That was my question, the state's not going to help us set it up?
No, they just drop it off.
They drop it off.
They drop it off. Drop it off and say, have a nice day, you figure it out.
See that? No, I mean, it's nobody's fault, that's the way, that's the way it is.
It is the way it is.
No, we're not blaming you for anything or any of the people that worked in this building with you. It's frustrating because every time you turn around... Final public forum? Mr. Reposa.
Just a brief update.
Joe, there's no microphone.
It's the wrong mic.
Just a brief update on the budget where it stands. We were, what we could level fund, we were level funded, and we were showing maybe like favorable forty-two thousand dollars. But as of this evening, received notification that we have additional Norfolk Aggie students.
Another one?
Another one.
We got one graduating.
We have one that's in the ninth grade. We have two that have applied additional for the ninth grade, and one that's applied for the tenth grade, so that'd bring it back to four, if they all get approved.
What did you have as your number in there, in the line item?
We had, we put in one's...
Oh, you had one, see, I still have the four in mine, so my budget's a little different. But it's only three, Joe, it's the one tenth grader and the two freshmen, so it's just three. Because the others will be graduating.
So plus we have...
No, going forward, I'm saying that it's, that it's applied, two more have applied for...
Snow and ice is still growing, it snowed yesterday, half an inch, but...
Where?
Not in my yard.
So I admit, did they sand? I don't know, but I'm...
Just, the road just got wet, but on the grass and...
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you know...
But I mean, if it's cold enough and it mixes, they're going to have...
We get that, and it stays below twenty-eight. They're going to be sanding, because as soon as they get one call, liability laws make us sand, we have to.
Let me revisit fiscal thirteen, the year we're in right now. We, our appropriations with special, the special town meeting and annual town meeting, exceed the projected income by about two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. So this will be another year, now if you get snow and ice, you can't really count on that free cash to bring it. So it would be like the fourth consecutive year the town has spent more money than it's brought in. And to attest to that, you got, you know, all the MSBA refund money's all gone, it's been all appropriated. So year after year, we're spending more money than we're getting in.
That's the federal and state governments do that.
Sure.
We can't print any.
We can't do that.
We can't print any. I mean, just, the blizzard cost us forty's...
Forty-five, forty-six.
Forty-five thousand dollars for two and a half days of plumbing. I mean, we did, yeah, we did apply, because we had a state of emergency, so we did apply for reimbursement for the hours that we had. So we might get some back. That only depends on how much the federal government gives the state, and then how much the state has to distribute to all three hundred and sixty-five towns. Could be us way at the bottom.
You know, we're not crying wolf here, it's a reality, we really don't have a lot to work with.
Thank you, Joe.
I know the school district is going to certify their numbers fairly soon, I can't remember the date from the email. But I do know from my brief conversation with the superintendent, they're still off by about three million. So, just to give you a heads up on that.
Still off on...
They're looking to cut three million, or are they going to be looking for an additional percentage from us?
Yeah, good luck to that.
An additional percentage from...
From the towns, contribution from the towns.
Ain't going to happen.
And they're talking their budget for next year?
Yeah, FY14, yeah.
Good luck. Okay.
I'd just like to see their E and D numbers again for this year, and how much they're going to use for that to offset, because last year it was... I want to say a million, but I could be wrong, I can't remember the exact number, but it was outrageous. So, you know...
I know that Tom at Dudley is filing...
Yes, and Joe's been...
For some legislation. If... Yeah. And I'm going to contact a couple of the people from Dudley that I do know that are involved with that, because they're trying to make legislation so that, well, we have proposition two and a half in this state that the school departments statewide need to follow the same rule.
Well, especially your regional.
Especially regional schools, I mean, you get, like us, very small town, Blackstone's a larger town, with industry in it. Not that they're rich, but they can absorb a hit a little bit better than we can. And, you know, we get a five percent increase, which four to five percent every year, it seems, where we can raise revenue in town two and a half percent, unless we do an override. But schools don't have to follow that guideline. So that's the legislation that's being attempted, but, you know, up on Beacon Hill, a lot of common sense legislation never seems to get through.
If it makes sense, it doesn't happen. And I think an important piece to realize is, and I'm still learning about the regional budget, you know, the state sets the number for the school, and then the school comes to us and say, this is your mandatory number. And then what they do with that money is at their discretion, and in my opinion, and without angering any of my soon-to-be ex-friends on the school committee, but the manner in which they spend that money doesn't always go back to educational purposes. And when, you know, we don't have a library, we don't have these things, our senior center, to see those kind of extras, as we were just talking about wants and needs, and we're not getting our four thousand dollar sign, but the school's able to, you know, fund programs up there that don't hold any educational, yes, social, yes, rounds out the individual, but doesn't hold educational value to our students. I have a problem with it, and the way in which they spend some of their, the E and D account is, in my opinion...
They're creative spending.
It's not illegal, but it's really not morally acceptable in my opinion.
Okay, any other public forum? Okay, our next regular meeting will be March eighteenth, two thousand thirteen, seven PM, Longfellow Municipal Center. Reminder, Wednesday night at six, or six-thirty here. Six-thirty here for a hearing about the, financial hearing about the special town meeting Monday night at the elementary school, which has to do with the high school roof for the funding of about three point eight million dollars.
Well, it's about seven hundred thousand to Millville.
Yeah, but the cost Millville around, you know, seven hundred thousand, maybe a little bit more. But it's just a cap of three point eight something million dollars of borrowing power for the school committee, so...
And that's a fifty-seven percent reimbursement back from MSBA.
Yeah, we will get reimbursed, fifty-seven percent.
We'll only get reimbursed if it gets approved at the special town meeting.
Exactly.
Right.
If it doesn't get approved, we're on the hook for...
For a hundred percent, and I think that's important that the townspeople understand.
Pay now or pay later?
If we, if we, if the town can approve it at Monday night's meeting, we have fifty percent reimbursement from MSBA. If it does not get approved by Millville and by Blackstone, both towns need to approve it, then we get no reimbursement, and both towns are on the hook for three point six, point seven, three point six, seven million?
Yeah, three point eight.
Say three point eight million dollars.
That's their floating number.
Well...
They don't have a firm number.
We can't, we cannot, with this article, we cannot borrow more than three point eight million.
That would be a mess.
So, but the estimate for the roof is about three point six million, so it's nothing to laugh at, and so... If at all anybody can come Wednesday night, but most definitely next Monday night to that meeting at the elementary school. And again, that one is at six-thirty as well. Six-thirty, the eleventh, Monday night at the elementary school, extremely important, it has a lot to do with more taxes.
I would be extremely confident as a quorum, that's important, so...
The important part is to get at least forty of us Monday night, and I would really hope that we do not fail to do that. That would be...
And it would be relatively painless and quick with one article?
Yeah. There's only one article at the, only one article, that's it, at this town meeting. Between you and I, we have ten voters. So, so with that said, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.